Application 2209.
Application 2209, site plan for travel daycare center and housing for the elderly at 291 Burlington Avenue. Assessors map 20, lot 92, R15, single-family residential zone, Demato Realty LLC applicant. And Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, in terms of correspondence, there are two items. First, let me orient the commission. The application for this project starts on page 55 of your digital packet. If you go to page 59 and 60, you'll see the first set of staff comments. They are, you'll bear with me, I need to enlarge this, my eyes aren't that good. The first staff review was conducted for this project on November 10th, 2015. And you can see there were a number of staff comments we reviewed. I'm sorry, revised plans were subsequently submitted. The staff conducted its second review of the site plan on December 1st, 2015. And you can see there's still a handful of staff comments left, but most of them have been addressed. There are a couple that I think we're going to want to get into in a little more detail during the course of the public hearing. And starting on page 62 of the digital packet are all the site plan drawings. There's a lot of them. The ones you may want to pay particular attention to on page 65 is the layout drawing which shows the proposed parking layout. Page 70, and we'll get into this as part of the presentation, I think, is the garages that are proposed in phase two, the site plan for the garages. And on page 77, the garage elevations. The one thing that I would remind the commission about this application, you will recall that earlier this year in, and I hope I'm not stealing it, Attorney Zaiogus is thunder, that the special permit for this project was approved by this commission in April. And at that time, you approved the use of or the reuse of this building as a child daycare center for up to 110 children and up to 35 units of housing for the elderly. So the applicant is now back with a site plan, which, as you'll see, is primarily involving a parking layout associated with those uses. And I'm sure looking into that in more detail, but that kind of sets the table for the presentation. And it turns out, this before I begin, I'm going to hit the lights in the back, so delete this. That's fine.
Yeah, I don't need to be...
Do you need a light on, Attorney Zaiogus?
I'll be right back.
Attorney Mark Zaiogus, 106 North Street, Bristol, Connecticut, for the applicant. As Alan had mentioned, this property had previously...
Excuse me, Attorney Zaiogus is going to need to speak right in the microphone.
As previously mentioned by Alan, this property had previously received a site plan approval for a daycare facility and elderly housing. So the site plan is what we're presenting today. And as I'm sure you're all more than aware of, the property, it's Jennings School, which is on Burlington Avenue and has Cypress and Jennings Road as also the side roads that hit butts. The biggest concern you have for this is the, the building obviously is staying as is. There'll be some small additions to it for some entrance ways and from sort of elevator shafts, that type of stuff. But as far as the building itself, it's substantially staying as is its current condition. The biggest thing is the parking and the egress and ingress to form the property. So when you look at it, the main thing is you've got the daycare facility, which they have approvals for up to 110 children to be housed at the daycare facility. And if you look off of the Cypress Street exit, that's where the daycare is going to be coming in and dropping off. You can see that there's a, an entrance going off of Cypress Street. And there's pretty much a rectangular turnaround area around the parking. And that's going to be the drop-off area for the daycare. So they're all going to be concentrated in that one area. We're trying to keep the housing component and the daycare component separate. So that's going to be the exclusive drop-off area for the daycare facility. There is a, however, an entrance there for the elderly housing. They'll go up a flight of stairs and be able to access it there. But this is the only drop-off area for the daycare.
Excuse me, Attorney Zaiogus, can you have the site plan layout put up on screen? Can that be zoomed in on? The commission can obviously see because they have it in front, that that's great. Perfect.
So you can see the entrance coming off of Cypress Street, right there where the red dot is. And there's a rectangular parking area. That will be the area that they'll drop off for the daycare. So they'll be able to come around in a circle and exit right there on Cypress Street. And that's going to be the main entrance, pick-up and drop-off for the daycare facility. So there's sufficient parking there for the parents who are coming in can park their cars, drop off their children and get back into, into their cars and exit off of Cypress Street. Although there is a, a means to go through the parking area to exit on Jennings Road, there's really no reason anyone would need to do that. They'll be able to drop off and then just exit right there on Cypress Street. The area to the west is where the employees will be parking right there. Based on the zoning regulations, we need 50 parking spaces for employees, up to 50 as the number, maximum number of employees we have. So we have sufficient parking for them, but that's going to be the parking area that the employees will be using. And then there's also, you can see there's numerous other parking areas, and that'll be for the residents and for additional visitors. When you're talking about the parking, I believe the required number that we need for this project is 97. We have 112 parking spaces available. And we believe that provides us with the additional cushion because, you know, the residents will have visitors coming in now and then. So, you know, it provides some additional parking for them. And the needs of the daycare and the elderly kind of are reciprocal. You know, on the weekends, you may get more visitors to the property. And the daycare's not functioning on the weekends, so they'll be able to share the parking in that regard. But in any event, we have in excess of the number of parking spaces that we need. The main entrance for the elderly will be...
Is it on mic? Mic is, can you bring the mic up? Sorry.
That's okay. The, the main entrance for the elderly will be off of Jennings, Jennings Road there. They'll come in, it's a one-way exit on the, right in that area, that's only a one-way exit. So they'll be coming in on this area, they have parking there, and then also some diagonal parking there. This is an area here where they can also drop off quickly to get their groceries and everything in. And then they can park their cars. It's not a full parking space, but there's enough area there for them to be able to access the, their building and get their groceries and then pull the car back into a parking space. You can see that there are two areas that are going to be used for the daycare playground facilities. Those are right there, those are the two main areas. And then there's, and that has a separate entrance and exit right where they'll be able to come right out directly to that. They will not cross any of the parking area, they'll go directly into the, into the play area. There's also a small play area down below off of Cypress. And again, that has direct access from inside the building, so there'll be no crossing of any parking in that. And then you'll also note on the, on the plan that there are also two areas where the elderly have the ability to go outside, where there's a patio off on the Burlington Avenue side. And then there's also a bocce court, which they will be installing there for the elderly to be able to play bocce. It doesn't show on this sheet, but the, the other thing that we will be proposing is the additional garages on the property. And there will be another... Here we are, they're coming off of the Cypress Street entrance. There are garages that will be... There's five and I believe 11, Charlie, is it? 11, five, 16 garages right in that area that will be available for rental by tenants. So those will be coming off of Cypress Street and they go straight in and then on the left-hand side. Now, the, those garages will actually, because of the elevations, will be sunk down a little bit as far as the entrance area goes. So the elevation on those will be less than the 14 feet, which is required by the ordinances. And we will also, there's an existing fence which will remain there, but we'll also be putting in landscaping as a buffer so that the neighbors will not be looking at the back of the garages. There'll be a buffer zone there with abrevieties to shield that. And because of the elevations of the property, most of the garages is not visible from the, from the neighbors on the ground level. If they were up on the second floor of their house, obviously, they would be able to see it. But from the ground level, most of the garages are going to be shielded by the elevation and also by the buffer of the abrevieties and landscaping that we'll be putting in there. As far as the, as far as the comments go, there was a first round of comments that were fairly substantial, but they were addressed by the applicant. Most of them were, there wasn't anything that there was a difficulty with, they were all addressed. Second set of comments, more housekeeping in nature, some changes, some missed figures that needed, or distances that needed to be put on the plans. All of those things have been addressed in a letter from Robert Green and Associates. And as we, if you see the letter, there's no problem with any of those changes. So all of those will be taken care of. And one of the things we're trying to do is get all the plans together, all the comments together. We will resubmit the plans. And again, there's nothing of any real substance to them that has to, that necessitated printing out a whole new set of plans. The comments have been referred to in a letter to Alan dated December 4th, I believe. The main concern, I know that in talking with Alan and also in the, in the comments, was the elevation of the garages. They have been able to change the elevation partly due to the fact that they, the contour of the land, they're sunk down a little bit, and they've changed the pitch of the roof so that the garages will be under the 14-foot requirement of the zoning regulations. So that has been addressed and it will be put on the plans as they're, as they're finalized. But it's not an issue, it's something we've agreed to. The architect has already drawn it, so it's not, we know that we can do it and it won't be an issue. So we don't see that as being a main concern. So when we're looking at the additional comments, I don't think there's anything there today that really necessitates us doing anything different but making some revisions to the plans. And I don't think it's anything that would hold up an approval. The bulk of the plans are in good condition. We've worked with the city and, and, you know, the plan, it came out very good. It's very, not very different, but it's, it's a different layout than the initial plan. But once you get out there and you start getting your elevations and doing your site plan, you know, you see that certain things don't work. So they came up with a new site plan, which I think is conducive to the project. You've got a good traffic flow, plenty of parking. The other thing which is nice when you're looking at it, there's a lot of green space. They've left as much green as possible. And in the parking areas, there are big islands that are utilized in the parking areas, so that would be the additional green space and some landscaping. So for the most part, I think everything has been addressed. Anything that's left is just ministerial and can be dealt with on a, on a staff level. But if anybody has any questions regarding the layout or the plans, we have both the architect and the engineer here, so we can address any of those issues.
So the children that are in the daycare won't have to go outside in inclement weather to go to their playground? They can walk through the bottom basement and come out on the back side of the building to go to the playground?
They have an indoor playground, if that's necessary.
Tony, could you pull the plan up on the daycare?
Floor plan.
Yeah, the first basement level. Charlie Nyberg, Associated Architects, 37 Northwest Drive, Plainville. So this is the south end of the building. We're doing an addition, which will consist of a vestibule and a sort of secure area. Parents will drop their children off in the requisite number of drop-off spaces and what have you. There's actually extra if need be. Come in the vestibule, come in reception, they'll sign their children in. This will be a lockable door. They will then come into this hallway. And the infant, toddler and toddler, so the kids that, the children that are the smallest that need to be the sort of closest to the entrance are located in this south end of the building. This small section right here is a vestibule that will take you out to that side of the play yard that's associated with the infant, toddler, toddler situation. So the children can come in, parents will bring them in. And as they come down, this is the admin area. There's also, for inclement weather, we're utilizing this lower-level gym space so there will be an ability to have indoor play area if the weather is bad. As well as, we're going to be utilizing the corridor for what we're going to be sort of calling a main street so they can use this for trussicles and walking and what have you. And to gain access to play yards, which we noted as being over here on the west side of the building. They're creating a ramp to grade, which will then come out to a sidewalk, which will take you to those two play yard spaces. These four classrooms are the preschool classrooms. This is sort of a transition room that the girls wanted to have from a diaper training area. If there's someone who's not, who's old enough but not quite trained, there'll be a little diaper changing station here. And the other three classrooms, they, they would have access to their requisite toilet and lab. And there's some work counters, cubbies for storage and what have you. This will also serve as a second means of egress. It's at this end of the building, so it'll have means of egress to the west, half a flight of stairs, grade leveled, ream out, which will also serve as the drop-off area for service to the daycare. So this will allow them to bring in foodstuffs and whatever for storage, which is located over here. Their kitchen is located in this area. And then this is mechanical. And then the admin offices occupy the rest of that lower-level space.
That's great, thank you very much. At this point, commissioners, do you think we should open it to the public? At this time, we're going to open it to the public, and I've got a feeling we're going to have some people who would like to speak. So I'm just going to just quickly go over again. It's going to be, the public participation is opened in two phases. First of all, we ask those people who are for the application to come up and... Something's off, Mike. Oh, there it is. The microphone off. Sorry about that, everyone.
What are you, eating it?
We're going to ask those people to come up first, who are in favor of the application, speak and give your name and address at the podium, please, for, for our secretary. We're going to then ask those people who are against the application to come up and speak. We will then give the attorney or the developers a chance to answer those questions. There'll be a second round also. The only requirement is that you must speak. If you speak in the first round, you may speak in the second round. But if you do not speak in the first round, you are ineligible for the second round. So at this point, if there's someone who would like to speak in favor of the application, if you would come up to the podium, please. Okay, barring none, if there's someone who would like to speak against the application, would you please come up to the podium, please? State your name and address for the record.
Ronald Giddix, 89 Beach Street, Bristol.
I just called you last name, please.
G.I.D.D.I.X. I'm really here in cooperation with a co-navior of mine, Karen Nichols, who lives right across the street from the complex on Jennings Road. And we have only one concern, or she has one concern, and that is the parking along Jennings Road is headlights right at her house. And it actually block, it could block or blind three, three neighborhood driveways on the opposite side of the street. And the diagonal parking is definitely going to blind westbound traffic on Jennings Road. Because the, the amount of screening planting they have is minimal. It's hardly any. It's, particularly in its initial stages until it grows up or matures. So that's all I have to say. Karen, do you want to come?
Karen Nichols, N.I.C.H., oh, that's 2610 Road. That is my most concerned, parking. Headed right towards my house, my living room windows, bedroom windows. Plus, it is a piece of investment property, I have second floor, it's always rented, I have a tenant. And it can be blinding coming out of my driveway also. I have one other concern, parking on Jennings Road. I've come to all the meetings and they assured that there would be less traffic on Jennings Road. It appears now where the entrance for the tenants to go in, the majority of their guests will probably be parking on Jennings Road, on both sides of Jennings Road. So that will also be a traffic hazard, people coming in on their driveways.
Anything else? Thank you. Is there anyone else at this point that would like to speak against the application? Please come up to the podium.
My name is Beare Brouby, B.E.R.U.B.Y., I live on 90 Cypress Street. I'm not particularly in favor or against the application, but I have a concern regarding traffic. Cypress Street is pretty angled. And in the past, when there was still school, people were parking on the street because sometimes the parking lot was not big enough or it was not moving fast enough. So in winter and fall, when there's a slippery road condition and people were parking on both sides of the street, the street becomes so narrow and if you go downhill, you're literally breaking and you're ending up in the middle of Burlington Avenue. It's really a hazard that has never been addressed while there was Jennings School. And maybe you can do something about that, that there is at least no parking on the street. In this small stretch of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the application? Attorney Zaiogus, would you like to respond to the comment?
In regards to, in regards to the parking along the streets, I, I think we've addressed this in the fact that, you know, there is much more parking in this facility now than there ever was when it was Jennings School. Jennings School didn't have this much parking available to them. One is they had more playground area, which, you know, we don't, obviously don't need. We have the same concern because we're dealing with a daycare and we want to make sure, you know, you're, you're talking about infants to four years old. So we want to make sure they're able to drop the students off right at the building. So we've put sufficient parking in there to make sure that that is, is going to be available to them. So it would be very unlikely that there would be any parking going on Cypress Street because, you know, that's, that's not in our best interest and it's not in the children and their parents that are dropping them off's best interest. So, you know, we were required to have 97 spaces, we have 112. So we think we've more than accommodated that, and I don't think parking will be a big concern. Regarding the, the lighting on the streets, you know, I'm not sure what you can really do. I mean, it's, you know, people come, they park and it's, their, their lights are off, you know, almost instantly. So I don't think it's going to be a major concern. You know, we can look in to see if there's, you know, some type of landscaping, the screening, that may be able to subdue the lighting a little bit if it becomes an issue.
Or physical screening, you know, sometimes.
Yeah, you'll have to come up to the podium, I'll give you a shot.
So, you know, I think we may be able to do some, some landscaping, which, which will help subdue. You know, obviously, look, the cars are not going to be all that high. And we are dealing with, with the elderly, so, you know, I'm not sure that they're, the type that are going to be out all sorts of hours at the night. So it's, it's going to be a relatively subdued use of the property. And again, there is plenty of other parking spaces, so, you know, the ones on Jennings Road won't necessarily be utilized to the fullest extent because there's other parking areas that are available to all the tenants. And, you know, you only need 30 spaces for, for the existing use of property because we propose only 30 units there.
Thank you. All right, at this point, what we're going to do is go to our second round. We had no one, as I believe we didn't have anyone that came up in favor of the application. Is there anyone? So we don't have to worry about that at this point. Is there anyone that spoke in the first round that would like to speak in the second round against the application? Would you please come up to the podium at this point?
Ron Giddix again. I would think in the interest of life and safety, something has to be done with those, the headlights, those cars. In many towns, zoning regulations actually mandates that and makes a statement about it. I haven't even looked at the zoning regulations here in Bristol, but I doubt very much if they have any, in a real strict regulations that govern that, but, boy, I see that as a liability. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Nichols, would you like to speak or go ahead? Ms. Nichols, would you like to speak, or go ahead?
I'm basically just going to reiterate about the parking. My house is investment, okay, so that's a business...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Just write it, the microphone down, please, you can write it down.
Is that better?
You can, why, you can hold it down and speak.
Is that better? Okay, okay. It's an investment for me. I retired, okay, that's part of my retirement, the rental income. I think it's going to be a negative situation with all the traffic coming in and out, us trying to get out of our driveway, mainly the lights coming into my house. Even if it's on an angle, it's still going to come into the front windows. I mean, there's four windows abreast in the front of my house. People coming out of the driveway. Also, as the other neighbor said, the traffic on Cypress Street, I believe it is, is that Cypress on the other side? Jennings is saying, we really didn't have a lot of traffic, okay, on Jennings Road during the school time. It was only like the buses in the morning and some cars, and then they were gone. It was early, and then like at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. This could be an all-day situation where people visiting and parking on Jennings Road. You won't even be able to get out of my driveway if that happens. So I'm really opposed to that, and I've come to the other meetings, and they strictly said, oh, there's not going to be any parking on Jennings Road, there's going to be no problem with the daycare, they're just going to come right in, drop off, and drive right back out again. They said the allocated parking lot was the existing one on Jennings Road, just one existing one, and the one on the backside on Cypress, those were going to be their parking lots. There wasn't going to be any longer. And they spoke nothing about any garages along.
Ms. Derube, would you like to speak again? No, you're all set. Alan, anything that you'd like to comment on?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, in terms of the remaining site plan comments, as Attorney Zareus indicated, and as you can see from the second set of staff comments, probably the primary concern was that the, and continues to be, because we have not seen revised drawings, is that the zoning regulations establish a maximum height for accessory buildings in a residential zone of 14 feet. And I don't want to get in, unless you want, I don't know that I need to get into the nuances of how that's measured, but it's a 14-foot height. And it's based on average finished grade, so if you have a flat surface, you're going to measure it differently than if you have a building that was graded higher in the back than in the front, for example. But the drawings that were submitted for the second review, the garages do not appear to meet the zoning regulations for height, which is why that comment was made. The response that we got from the engineer's office indicated that the garages are being reduced in height and will meet the regulations. We have not seen that. I have no reason to believe that they can't meet the regulations, but I have not, have not seen that yet to confirm that. So, you know, you may want to take that into consideration this evening, and we can talk about that a little bit further, if it is a concern of the commission. The second site plan comment that I want to speak to, which is, was in both the first and second reviews, was a suggestion, and I think all we can do as staff is make the suggestion, and you as the commission can decide whether or not you think it's appropriate. And I would refer you to our comment number six, and I can explain this a little bit more clearly if it's not clear. To provide more complete pedestrian access between the public sidewalks and the site's internal sidewalks, consider adding a walkway along the east side of both Cypress Street and Jennings Road, the two-way Jennings Road driveway openings. So this might make the most sense if you look at the site plan drawing on your screen, and scroll down towards the bottom of one of the drawings, the layout drawing, the landscape drawing, to the Cypress Street driveway opening, and you'll notice there's an existing sidewalk along Cypress Street, as there is along Jennings Road. And if you look into the, sort of the heart of the parking area near, around the building, you'll see internal sidewalks, but there's no sidewalk from the public sidewalk along the driveway opening into the site. And the concern that I have is that if someone is walking, we'll say, along Cypress Street, you're on Burlington Avenue, you turn and go on Cypress Street, and you want to walk into this site, once you get onto the site, you're either on the grass, or you're walking in the driveway to get to a sidewalk that is an internal sidewalk. So the suggestion that we've made, and again, it's not a requirement, you can require it if you think it's appropriate, or you can say, thanks very much, the staff, we, you know, we don't see a need for it. But what we're suggesting is that on, as the comment notes, on the west side, I'm sorry, on the east side of the Cypress Street driveway opening, and then on the east side of the Jennings Road driveway opening, the two-way opening, that there be a sidewalk that goes from the public sidewalk, parallel and adjacent to the driveway opening, into the parking area. Still, someone's going to cross, obviously. It doesn't take you directly to a sidewalk, but you can at least walk into the site without having to do so on the grass, or worse yet, into the driveway. So that's a way of getting people from the public sidewalk into the site. Again, it's a suggestion that we've made, certainly the applicant can respond to it this evening, but you get to decide whether you think those are appropriate or not. So I think those of the six remaining staff comments, those are really the two key ones. The others are really housekeeping matters. I do want to speak to a couple of issues that have been raised by the public, to help clarify part of this for the commission. As Attorney Zareus pointed out, that there is significantly more parking proposed on this site for this project than exists out there now. Is it possible that people will park along Jennings Road and Cypress? That is certainly possible. Can this commission prevent that? No, you can't. You have no jurisdiction over the public right of way. Certainly, if neighbors feel that parking along Jennings Road or Cypress Street is a concern, that is most appropriately brought to the Board of Police Commissioners, who would have the authority to limit, if they felt it appropriate, limit parking along one or the other or both of the two streets. So you have no jurisdiction there, but as has been noted, there are 112 parking spaces proposed for this project. That's more than what zoning regulations do require. In terms of the landscaping along Jennings Road, one of the speakers talked about headlights, and that is certainly a legitimate concern. And I think you have to decide if it's a significant enough concern that you want to see the site plan revised. I would refer you to, if you go to page 75 of your digital packet, and kind of scroll to the top of the drawing, this is the landscape plan. And if you look along, between the two driveway openings, so you look at parking spaces 94 to 103, and then the diagonal parking is 104 to 112. And you'll notice that there is landscaping shown, or proposed, along the nose of those, of each of those two parking rows. What's proposed, if you'll bear with me for a moment, what's proposed are 18- and 24-foot high junipers. So they're not intended to screen, they'll provide minimal screening of headlights. Presumably, they will grow larger, but certainly at the time of planting, they will be, you know, a foot and a half, two feet tall. Certainly, if you felt that headlight glare onto the street, onto adjoining properties is an issue, you could certainly request that the applicant provide a taller, more rigorous screening material. Certainly, you want some kind of air green, because that's going to provide screening throughout the year. You may want them to be, you know, three or four feet high. I think, I think you are within your rights to make that request, but having said that, I think you have to feel that you have a firm basis in making that request of the applicant. If you're, if you feel that, you know, it's a concern, but nothing that rises to the level of aiming further than what's shown on the site plan, and you're, you know, comfortable with what's shown, then that particular issue may need no further action on your part. That's really something for the board to talk about and decide what you want to do with it. Again, except for these couple of issues, the site plan from a technical standpoint does appear to be ready for action this evening, but, again, the issue of the garages and the sidewalk sections I mentioned, and then the question of the screening.
Glad to answer any questions that you have. I have one question. The lighting plan, did the applicant just model the new lighting that's going in, or did they actually model what was existing? Just because when I look at the lighting plan, the photometrics, especially in front of buildings, all zeros, and pretty much around the entire building, it's zero, which is obviously inadequate, which I have to imagine, there's wall mounts, you know, wall packs on the building itself, but...
I will defer to the architect on that. He can perhaps address it.
Charlie Nyberg, again, the lighting plan was done by a lighting consultant who provided us with the poles at the lighting lumin level, and those levels are respectful of the lighting that we have from the pole. There may not be any lighting around the perimeter.
I understand that problem. But we don't have any... Concerned with the front of the building.
The front being...
Especially the massive green space area with the arched sidewalk that has zero lighting.
That may very well be the case, because there's no light out there.
Yeah.
There's nothing there now other than streetlights.
Yeah, and you're, you've got a walking path that goes to a senior assisted living facility that has zero lighting levels.
Well, we don't have any hollers out there at this point. There was no lighting before, we don't see that necessarily in the dark evening that there's people going to be out there. If you feel you want to have something, I guess you can make that as a request.
Well, I think it's a little bit different than the school, which was in session during the day hours, you know, not as many night activities where you're not rested there.
They did have, they did have KTA meetings, and there were certainly scouts and all other kinds of activities that would go on typically in the school. It's just that we felt that there was no necessity to do that, but...